Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. The program will begin at 5:30, so we will start here in just about one minute. So if you could just stand by, so we can get to 5:30 and everyone that's planning on joining us tonight will be here. So we thank the early birds for getting here prior to 5:30. And as soon as we hit that 5:30 mark, then we will begin our program. So please stand by for another few seconds here. Welcome, everyone. On behalf of our hosts, the City of San Clemente, thank you for attending the Virtual Transportation and Mobility Town Hall Meeting. The goal of this meeting is to provide updates to the public and present a forum for the public to ask questions of elected officials related to the toll road. My name is Jim Nguyen, and I will be the co-moderator for this evening's town hall meeting. I serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce and work in the area as a commercial real estate broker, providing real estate solutions for businesses and property owners in South Orange County. Steve?
Welcome, everyone. My name is Steve Misca, and I will moderate this evening with Jim focusing on the audience Q and A. I am the Executive Director of First Amendment Voice, a nonpartisan San Clemente-based nonprofit that conducts civic engagement around the country. Audience members, you have two viewing options during this webinar. Gallery and speaker mode. Gallery allows you to see all of the panelists at once, and is probably the default viewing option for most of you. Speaker mode displays the current speaker in the majority of your screen with all other panelists in small boxes up at the top of your screen. You can toggle between these two modes at the top right of your screen. To ask questions, please look to the bottom of your webinar and click on the Q and A function. That will open up, and you'll be able to submit questions for the panelists to answer. Before you submit a question, feel free to read any that are in the open queue. Maybe your question has already been asked. If not, type a question in. Please only submit questions. Look at the other questions as well. If you like a question, click on the thumbs up icon next to it. Audience voting is a big part of this experience. The questions with the most votes will rise to the top of the queue and be more likely to get asked during this evening's program. If your question is directed at a specific panelist, please indicate that. We are excited to give San Clemente and surrounding area residents the opportunity to learn more about developments with respect to county transportation plans. Thank you for coming out to join us this evening. Back to you, Jim.
Thank you, Steve. On behalf of the City of San Clemente, we thank this evening's panelists for their willingness to furnish updates on mobility enhancements and provide insights on preserving San Clemente's quality of life. I will go through the format of the town hall meeting now, and then we'll introduce each of the panelists. After introductions, each of the panelists will provide a five to seven-minute mobility update, including surrounding issues such as process, litigation, history, open space preservation, and actions underway to protect the quality of life for San Clemente residents. Following the updates, the panelists will answer questions from you, the audience. There will be approximately forty-five minutes for those questions to be addressed by the panelists. Our meeting tonight is scheduled to end no later than 7:00 PM. This town hall meeting is being recorded and will be replayed on the city's public access channel and will be posted tomorrow on the city's YouTube channel. I will now introduce this evening's panelists. Former San Clemente Mayor Wayne Eggleston, please say hello to the audience.
Good evening.
Wayne is the Executive Director of the Marine Monument Park Semper Fi in San Clemente. He served as mayor of San Clemente from nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand and ten and as Planning Commissioner from two thousand twelve through two thousand sixteen. He was very involved in Casa Romantica becoming a cultural center and responsible for the Miramar Theater redevelopment approval entitlements. Mr. Eggleston was instrumental in fighting against the toll road green alignment to Tressles. Councilman Gene James, please say hello to the audience.
Good evening, San Clemente.
Gene James served twenty years with the U.S. Army Military Police Regiment, spending a career in major corporations directing and leading security, crime prevention, and investigations, while also lecturing at the undergraduate level in criminal justice and at the graduate level in security management, homeland security, and leadership. Gene has served on city council since two thousand and nineteen. He currently serves as a director on the TCA, a member of the council's hospital subcommittee, and the toll road subcommittee. Councilmember Kathy Ward, please say hello to the audience.
Good evening, San Clemente.
Former mayor Kathy Ward was elected to San Clemente City Council in two thousand and fourteen and re-elected in two thousand and eighteen. Councilmember Ward represents the residents of San Clemente on the Investment Advisory Committee, Song's Community Engagement Panel, Orange County Fire Authority, California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and is a director on TCA's Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor Agency. Councilmember Ward has dedicated her service to ensuring the protection of San Clemente's general plan and residents' quality of life. To this end, she has participated in all aspects of transportation and mobility for Orange County and has worked to settle the issue of an extension of the 241 toll road once and for all for San Clemente and other south county cities. Mr. Scott Smith, please say hello to the audience.
Good evening, everybody.
Scott Smith has served as city attorney for San Clemente since two thousand and five. Scott has advised California cities on issues of municipal law since he started his practice in nineteen eighty-five. He is proud to have headed his firm's commitment to fund San Clemente's litigation to stop a San Clemente toll road since the lawsuit was filed in two thousand and sixteen. Scott grew up in Utah but has raised his family in San Clemente. Mr. Tom Bonnigat, please say hello to the audience.
Hello, everybody.
Tom currently serves as Public Works Director, City Engineer for the City of San Clemente. He is a licensed civil engineer with twenty-nine years of public agency and private sector experience and has been a San Clemente resident for the past twenty years. Mr. Andrew Brotherton, please say hello to the audience.
Hello.
Andrew is the current president of the Board for the Reserve Homeowners Association. He joined the board four years ago. Andrew is the father of three children. He and his wife Brandy are involved with various community organizations such as Children's Hospital of Orange County and the Orange County Sheriff's Advisory Board. Senator Pat Bates, please say hello to the audience.
Good evening, everyone.
Senator Patricia Pat Bates represents South Orange and North San Diego Counties in the California State Senate. She grew up in Long Beach and began her professional career as a Los Angeles County social worker. She was the driving force behind Laguna Niguel's campaign for cityhood and became its first mayor upon the city's incorporation in nineteen eighty-nine. She served four years as mayor, four terms as mayor. Voters elected her to the California State Assembly in nineteen ninety-eight, the Orange County Board of Supervisors in two thousand and six, and the California State Senate in two thousand and fourteen. She is married to John, and they have two adult children and four grandchildren. The Transportation Corridor Agency, the TCA, also known as the Toll Roads, was invited to tonight's town hall and declined to attend. Caltrans was also invited to participate and also declined to attend. The Orange County Transportation Authority, the OCTA, was invited and was unable to provide a representative for this event. OCTA will be engaging key stakeholders and partner agencies for in-depth discussions through an elected official roundtable slated to take place on Tuesday, November tenth, from nine to ten thirty AM. We will now start with former San Clemente Mayor Wayne Eggleston, who will provide a historical perspective of San Clemente's open space ordinance known as Measure B and how it is related to the toll road. Wayne, the camera is yours.
Well, thank you, Jim. I was elected to the San Clemente City Council in nineteen ninety-eight. I was a very opposed to any toll road in, around, or through San Clemente. In early nineteen ninety-nine, the TCA invited me to a helicopter tour with them on, over the alignment that they had first proposed through San Clemente, which was, in fact, fourteen. When we got in the helicopter, they showed me where they wanted to put the toll road through. And I mentioned to them at the time, as we were flying over, I said, do you know that there's going to be a shopping center below here, which would have been the Lowe's Shopping Center and also the housing development above Lowe's? They were unaware of that. I obviously became very concerned about their knowledge of San Clemente at that time. So for a few years, they were still very much involved with that particular alignment, but then they decided that they would be, that they would go through the green alignment. The green alignment was to go behind Talega, enter Camp Pendleton, USMC, and go along the San Mateo watershed to the five at Tressles with a flyover very near Tressles. The, it was very interesting because for quite some time, there really wasn't much opposition to that until such time as a San Clemente resident, who's a surfer, put up a folding table at the entrance to Tressles with information about the toll road. And he stood there every weekend and with information with regard to how it was going to harm Tressles itself. Well, that really started the opposition, to say the least, there. Surf Rider became very much involved. And over the course of several years, they had, they had various drawings and so forth about how it was going to look. Well, people were very much gassed about how it was going to look as it was going to connect with five. Attended many meetings. It was very much in opposition to it. Quite frankly, I was the minority on city council at that time because the city council really wanted to promote the toll road and the green alignment. So one of the meetings I went to was the California Coastal Commission in Del Mar at a very large building. There were several thousand of people there. I was invited to speak to the Coastal Commission in opposition to this. And I was, obviously, there was a lot, lot of people in opposition to it at that time. Well, it still went through a process, to say the least, over a period of time, and what resulted was that eventually the Coastal Commission said no to that green alignment. Commerce Department said no to that alignment. The generals at Camp Pendleton said no. The Commandant of Marine Corps said no. And the Secretary of the Navy at that time, Secretary of Navy Mabus, also said no. So at that point, it was pretty much dead in the water. And then, since it was dead in the water, the, the TCA made an agreement with Surf Rider with regard to that particular alignment, vowing never to do that, to complete that alignment. However, just this last September, very interesting, Governor Gavin Newsom enacted a law and placed a permanent moratorium on putting a toll road through San Onofre State Beach, solidifying the terms of the nineteen sixteen settlement regarding that barred the Transportation Corridor Agency from completing the southernmost extension of two forty-one. And the new law, signed by Newsom, prohibits the construction and funding of a major thoroughfare, such as the street, road, or highway on or in the state park and as well on lands that belong to Richard O'Neill and Donna O'Neill Land Conservancy. Now, if you ever have hiked the Donna O'Neill Land Conservancy, you need to go there. It's, it's a beautiful, gorgeous, beautiful area, to say the least. So in effect, the green alignment is dead. And I know there are folks in San Clemente that say, well, let's do the green alignment because we don't want it to go through San Clemente. Well, it's off the table totally at this point. So I want to talk a little bit about the, some of the measures that were put forth in, in, in two thousand and eight with regard to open space in San Clemente to really try to prevent what was going on. The first one was, was Measure C. Measure C was put in the ballot from residents in San Clemente after the city council voted three to two to allow development on a golf course, which at that time was the Pacific Golf Course in San Clemente. It's now, it's now the Bellicolina Golf Course. And the measure was defeated as far as any development on that particular piece of land by sixty-nine percent of the residents in San Clemente. And so that became very much dead in the water. And that was in February of two thousand and eight. And then in November of two thousand and eight, the Open Space Ordinance came upon, said it was Measure B. And it was a ballot question that was on the November the fourth, two thousand and eight ballot voter for the voters of San Clemente. And it was, it just opened up the whole new territory that prohibited development on, on open space in San Clemente. And in fact, if, if there was going to be any development over one acre, then it had to go back to the voters of San Clemente for approval. Thus far, that hasn't happened. But that was adopted by seventy-two percent of the residents in San Clemente. So, you know, there's been a lot of, of, of of history back here, and I know that many people are not aware of it. But the Open Space Initiative in San Clemente has really had a very dramatic effect on what can be built and what can go through San Clemente, especially the toll road. You know, Ole Hanson way back when said, I have a clean canvas, and I'm determined to paint a clean picture. Think of it a canvas five miles long and one miles wide. So, you know, we go back to our original founder, Ole Hanson, about the quality of life in San Clemente and how we want to protect the quality of life. And many of us have fought against any toll road anywhere near San Clemente for many, many years. And, and, and I just don't think that's ever going to happen. But that's, that's what we're here tonight to be talking about and give you folks an update with regard to the, the current information. So thank you very much. That's a brief history of, of green alignment and the open space here in San Clemente.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Eggleston, for that detailed historical perspective. We will now hear from Councilmember Kathy Ward, who will provide some background on the TCA study as well as an update on the process that has brought us to this point in time. Please go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. The City of San Clemente has always been a steadfast supporter in maintaining the quality of life for this community, be it sober living homes, vacation rentals, or a toll road through our city property. Since two thousand and fifteen, the City of San Clemente has vehemently protected the community from the threat of a toll road being built inside our city. The city from the beginning of this fight knew it would be a long and hard fight, that we would have to hire experts to support the City of San Clemente in these efforts. While the TCA spent millions of dollars on lobbyists and consultants, the City of San Clemente has only spent a fraction of this amount to protect our residents and their quality of life. The investment has helped San Clemente in protecting our community. Through the use of these consultants, the city discovered that the traffic data did not warrant a toll road and that real traffic solution and traffic relief would be achieved through arterial solutions and the eventual fulfillment of the Measure M two and the master plan of arterial highways that goes to the year two thousand and forty and includes Measure M two tax projects that would be led through the Transportation Planning Agency, the Orange County Transportation Agency, the authority, excuse me. When the city conducted the toll road town hall in November of two thousand and nineteen, one of the takeaways from the public at that time was supporting the County of Orange's efforts to explore an acceptable alignment to Los Petronas Parkway, an extension of that Parkway, as a toll-free solution. And it would be San Clemente's locally preferred option that it be cost-effective and provide significant mobility improvements to South Orange County. That was back in March, I'm sorry, November of two thousand and nineteen. In March of two thousand and twenty, the Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor Agency Board of Directors, which I am a member of, and so is Councilmember James, but the Foothill Eastern adopted the South County Traffic Relief Effort Project, which included advancing the extension of the Los Petronas Parkway as an untold County of Orange major thoroughfare. I know that people have concerns because that was called number twenty-two, and it was included in the TCA's traffic relief effort, but I assure you at this time that this is a county arterial that we're going to be talking about tonight, and it is not the toll road. And I think that you'll get a lot of information out of this forum in, in order to make you feel better. Our efforts for the city now have to focus on the design and the layout of this extension. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Ward, for that background. Councilmember Gene James will now communicate the process of Rancho Mission Viejo applying for an amendment to the master plan of arterial highways known as MPa and what San Clemente will be doing to protect the quality of life for the City of San Clemente. Councilman, please go ahead.
Thank you. First, Mr. Nguyen and Colonel Misca. Thank you for being quite capable moderators tonight. Thank you for being here. I'm very glad we have you here because you're going to be very value-added. Since being on the San Clemente City Council, it's been my priority to protect the residents of San Clemente. As others begin the next phase of the possibility of any roadway coming close to San Clemente, it will be critical for San Clemente to have a seat at the table as this solution takes form with the County of Orange. Throughout San Clemente's fight to keep a toll road out of the city, local control has been communicated consistently by our elected officials. San Clemente, since day one, has wanted local control on anything that affects the city. However, the Transportation Corridor Agency, the TCA, AKA the Toll Roads, has been making decisions for San Clemente without listening to the city and its residents. The city has remained steadfast in ensuring our residents are heard and our resources are aligned to protect our community. The concept of local control is of the utmost importance to the City of San Clemente as Rancho Mission Viejo seeks to amend the county's master plan of arterial highways to add any roadway approaching our city. San Clemente needs to be involved to ensure the design meets the needs of our community, not the needs of a developer or any future planned communities. My commitment, our commitment, is to San Clemente and ensuring there is no impact on our citizens. Quality of life is our paramount concern. This process will entail a significant amount of public input as it progresses. Just like we have done in previous town halls, the city is committed to seeking the public's input and providing information to the public to review. It will be an open process. It is important to note that the City of San Clemente will need to initiate a general plan amendment to address any roadway that comes close to San Clemente. With this amendment request comes a number of public hearings before a decision is ever landed. The City of San Clemente is committed to the residents and wants to hear all the concerns so we, as a city council, can make the best decision possible for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman James, for that explanation and to both council members for fighting for our city and our way of life. The City of San Clemente Attorney Scott Smith will now provide a litigation update. Please go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, everybody. Could I have IT show the slides that, that go along with this? Great. Let's go to the next one. I wanted to provide a little bit of statutory history about how the potential for a toll road through San Clemente came to be and how we still have outstanding concerns about the status of that legislation and TCA's interpretation of it. In nineteen eighty-eight, the state legislature authorized the Foothill Eastern Corridor. It was not just with a location or route TBD. It was very specific. The statute that gave rise to this authority for TCA provides that the Foothill Eastern Corridor would be thirty-two miles to the San Diego Freeway, I-5, connecting below San Clemente in San, San Diego County. One of the problems that we've had with the litigation that I've been leading is that TCA and Caltrans have tended to really overinterpret this statutory authorization very loosely, including every possible alignment studied in the South Orange County Traffic Relief Effort that your kidding city council members referenced earlier. Two of those alignments were freeways that went right through the middle of San Clemente as opposed to neck, connecting to I-5 below San Clemente in San Diego County. And although that effort has been ended, we have not received adequate assurance from Caltrans or TCA to provide San Clemente the rest and trust that was provided to the area south of the county. In the legislation that was referenced earlier, TCA supported legislation to protect open space and natural resources south of the county line, but has provided adequate opposition to legislation sponsored by Senator Bates, that she'll mention later, that would provide the very same protections to our natural resources that former councilmember Eggleston described a minute ago. The next slide. Wayne mentioned the two thousand and sixteen agreements that put an end to the litigation challenging the green alignment. There's a good news and bad news aspect of those agreements that are the bad news aspects are the subject of the city's litigation against TCA. The good news is that the two thousand and sixteen settlement agreements protected San Onofre and the state parks avoidance area. But the agreements created an hyper incentive for TCA and environmental advocates to destroy equivalent open space in another area in lieu of the avoidance area in the state park. And so the next slide shows the kind of trouble that could lead to that hyper, that hyper incentive to TCA to provide an alternative alignment without environmental opposition, included the crazy ideas that were evaluated as part of the South County Traffic Relief Study. Two of the most audacious ones cut right through the middle of San Clemente instead of going south of San Clemente. So it is this overinterpretation of state authority that's the subject of the city's challenge to TCA and, and its reading of its own abilities and statutory authority. So far, TCA and Caltrans have been unwilling to agree that these scenarios are beyond their statutory authority. And so the city council has not been willing to relent in our quest to get judicial decree. These are off the table and beyond TC authority. I could see the next slide. The city's litigation is part of a three-pronged strategy. The first I just mentioned is the city's objective to obtain a judicial decree settlement agreement that takes San Clemente routes off the table and agrees that those are inconsistent with the California streets and highways code passage that I mentioned a minute ago. The second prong of the city's strategy is to seek legislation, barring a trans-San Clemente freeway, to settle that dispute once and for all by amendment to state laws that authorize TCA's existence. And finally, this was mentioned a minute ago by your councilmembers, seeking approval on development of amendments to the Rancho Mission Viejo master plan that specifically exclude SR two forty-one and authorize development like, for example, the Los Petronas Parkway extension that smack in the, of a freeway that would ruin our community. I'm going to talk just a minute about the judicial lawsuit that we have going on. The next slide. The lawsuit that we are still pursuing seeks a court decree that TCA and Caltrans lack the authority to alter the statutory route that I mentioned a minute ago. The second prong of our lawsuit argues that once the county has created a free county arterial, as it has done in Los Petronas Parkway up to Oso, the, that TCA is not able anymore to close that free county arterial and charge tolls for its use. And finally, there's an issue in our lawsuit that alleges that having eliminated the green alignment, for better, for worse, TCA can't continue for better, for worse, TCA can't continue to collect development impact fees from for the freeway that it's canceled. One of the main benefits of the transportation grid that was originally envisioned by TCA when it was created was to provide access to the San Clemente freeway, alternative access to the, I'm sorry, the Golden State Freeway as an alternative route to San Diego. Now that TCA has canceled that, that's fine, but why would San Clemente development, residents and businesses continue to pay for that? That's the summary of what's going on in the lawsuit. I should mention what has been mentioned earlier that the pursuit of this lawsuit has been funded by the Reserve HOA a little bit originally by the Capistrano Unified School District, but mostly by contingent fee arrangements with Shepherd Mullen. That's the law firm representing the reserve and my firm, Best Best and Krieger. Under our agreement with the city, the city does not have to pay ever any of the litigation expenses. The only way that we can be paid is by recovering fees from the defendants. To give you an idea of the order of magnitude of that, I don't have the exact numbers, but fees spent to date in pursuit of the lawsuit range between three and four million dollars paid for and advanced, mostly by the two law firms that are handling the case. That's all I have on the city's lawsuit and the ongoing litigation against TCA and Caltrans over their overexertion of authority.
Very good. Thank you very much for that update and also for your personal effort and commitment to seeing this to its end. Tom Bonniget will now provide a brief overview of key differences between a primary arterial road and a toll road slash highway.
Thank you. And could I ask IT to put up my single slide I have? There we go. Okay, thank you, everyone. I just want to spend a few moments to help explain the differences between what we call a county primary arterial and a highway toll road. They may look similar, but they actually are quite different. And this table just is intended to give you a high-level summary to address the concern that if the Los Petronas Parkway extension gets built, that that could somehow instantly turn into a toll road, and that just simply isn't the case. And so these roadways have different design standards, different right-of-way widths, et cetera. And this table is just briefly summarizes that in terms of the design speeds, the local arterial roadway is designed to county highway standards. It has a different and lower design speed than a typical highway or slash toll road would be, as you can see here. Generally, the right-of-way width, the width of the roadway plus the side shoulders and open space areas is much narrower on a primary arterial than a typical highway based on Caltrans standards, et cetera. And so you can actually see this out there if you drive some of the county arterial highways. So it's a big difference there. It becomes narrower once a primary arterial is built, for example, those Petronas, there will be conservation spaces and easements on either side that also further restrict the ability to ever widen it out in the future. Right-of-way and ownership is important with a primary arterial or county highway that becomes solely within the jurisdiction of the County of Orange. And as the case may be, San Clemente should the connection of Los Petronas end up within our city limits at the southern end by La Pata. On a highway, of course, Caltrans is the ultimate authority, whether or not it's told or not. They are the right-of-way owner. Design speeds differ as well, generally a bit lower on a primary arterial than a highway. The median size is much smaller, again, getting to that smaller right-of-way than a typical wide highway. The roadway designation is different. An arterial is a primary arterial roadway. It's on the county highway network. We call it the MPa, which stands for Master Plan of Arterial Highways. That's the abbreviation in the table. And of course, a highway, whether it's a toll road or a freeway, that's part of Caltrans, and that's the state highway plan, very different. And again, getting back to local control, the connections and the local roadway really become a function of County of Orange and/or San Clemente approvals as opposed to Caltrans and/or TCA or any toll road agency if you're talking about a highway or tollway. In terms of process, Councilmember James touched on it, but we have this master plan of arterial highways network, and there is a process to add roadway extensions to that network that the Orange County Transportation Authority administers. And so to the extent that a roadway extension comes into part of San Clemente, the city council would need to initiate a general plan amendment, as Councilmember James mentioned. And part and parcel with that process are several public hearings through our city planning commission and then again to the city council to ensure that we have appropriate and extensive public input on that process as any roadway concept becomes more detailed and analyzed for potential environmental impacts, et cetera. And so I'll leave it that with my brief overview, and then we'll see if we have questions later. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much for the informative explanation. Andrew Brotherton will now provide an update on the Reserve Homeowners Association's recent success with litigation involving the TCA's plans for the toll roads, proposed alignment number fourteen. Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you very much. I joined the board right when all of the Reserve Board, when all of the proposed alignments came out. So it became a real, obviously, concern for me and then for the residents, in particular with Route fourteen, this was a very big concern. We did initially try to think about what we could do. And after speaking with former mayor Dan Bane, we did decide to take a very proactive approach. And I know we partnered with the city with Scott Smith in initiating litigation, obviously challenging the settlement agreement due to the concerns of not only fourteen but all the alignments. It has been been involved in this whole process. It's been a a roller coaster, to say the least, with meetings. I know we met with TCA council, council member Ward, myself, Scott Smith, former mayor Bane. And it has been a roller coaster with the TCA announcement a couple, you know, shortly, maybe six months, nine months ago. Obviously, we do feel that it is a success. However, to Scott Smith's point, we don't have any, you know, final settlements or assurances. And that's something that we all need to be mindful of. When I met with, when I attended these meetings with the TCA with Kramer, Mike Kramer, my biggest thing was that we felt and our residents felt that we all should have a voice in any discussions that is going to impact this community. And I still feel strongly about that. And I do support what the city is doing, in pursuing this lawsuit. I mean, we're not done either. And we're trying to just get assurances to protect this city. So it is a success, but I think as a community overall, we do need to be guarded and keep our guard up and have a voice at the table so we have input into what happens within our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brotherton, to you and as well as the homeowners who make up the association for that commitment that you've made. The whole town thanks you for that. Well, we save the best for last. Senator Pat Bates will now provide us with an update on the impacts that the planning of transportation has on quality of life issues for San Clemente as a whole. Go ahead, Senator Bates. You are on mute, so you need to take yourself off of mute.
There you go. Yeah, there I go. Sorry, sorry, you guys. I should have learned since we had to do that in the legislature for the last week of session, so. But anyway, I was saying, good evening, great to be here, but I wanted to explain my mask wearing. I am at a state office, our state district office, and we are required when we are with other staff members. And I have Rhonda Riordan sitting right next to me here taking notes. She is my contact at the district level for this issue and all transportation issues. So I wanted her to be with us tonight. It's certainly great. I've noticed how many people are attending. It's great to have such broad participation in the town hall meeting. And the current status of what I consider our combined efforts to ensure it does not cut a path through San Clemente and destroy the beautiful quality of life that we have here. I do wish representatives from our transportation planning agencies, TCA, OCTA, Caltrans, would have been able to participate with us tonight. They are, as you know, important transportation planning agencies for our communities, for our county, for our state. And they have the responsibility, frankly, to hear from all parties, stakeholders, if you will, as their agencies seek and implement those mobility solutions that we all need and that we ask for. So even when we disagree on an approach or what they're talking about, we disagree with one another. It is so very important that we listen and we understand one another. And you are, of course, all stakeholders in this process. So it is critical for everyone here tonight, our residents, council members, staff, to stay involved. So your concerns are, most importantly, your concerns are respected. And I think that was something that was very troubling to me, having served on TCA for many years, that many of the residents who came to provide input described to me that there wasn't a lot of respect for their positions. And that's, to me, a very, very important part of our democracy, that our people are respected and that their concerns are addressed and attempts, strong attempts to resolve them. So we hope for that. I will share with you an example of how that involvement worked on a pass road building project in right here in San Clemente was the design of La Pata. I was your fifth district supervisor at that time. And La Pata was already in the design phase, moving to the construction phase when a group of San Clemente residents came to my office, very, very concerned, borderline very upset with what they anticipated to be very significant sound and visual impacts from the alignment as the road had been designed. So working with our transportation planning engineers, and I have to give a shout out to good old Harry Persaud, who has really worked with me for many years. And at one point, we probably were at swords, but became very good friends. He went to work on a new design that lowered the road, the elevation of the road, and certainly looked to provide a little more generous right-of-way on the edges of the borders of the road. So we had safer access for bikes and also our hikers. I know that that was a great hiking path. So we did accomplish something by, you know, sitting around a table, hearing everybody's concerns and seeing if we could work it out. Very, very important to do that. So as I've done in the past and the present, my priority is to work with residents of the communities I represent to make sure their concerns are addressed and solutions, solutions are implemented. With respect to the toll road project, as you know, I did, as a solution, introduce Senate Bill thirteen seventy-three, and I will mention that was Assemblymember Bill Bros' original legislation to end the toll road at Oso Parkway. I just adopted it into my legislation, which approached it from a different matter, a conservation easement. And it just sought to memorialize the decision the TCA had made in March of two thousand and twenty, which was mentioned. And that was to terminate the state route two forty-one toll road at Oso Parkway. The legislation simply deleted from our state highway system that portion of the two forty-one that runs, and I'm quoting from the code here or the manual, runs from state route five, south of the city of San Clemente, south San Clemente, as Wayne mentioned, and goes northward to Oso Parkway, which, as it lays in the current design, that's east of the city of Mission Viejo. And that is still on the books, and it really relates to the green alignment, not what they were planning with the alternative number fourteen. So what's the problem? You know, why was the legislation, you know, held up? Well, it passed in the Senate Transportation Committee and hit the Senate floor. We had strong bipartisan support. However, it was not heard in the Assembly Transportation Committee. And we had hit a really very difficult time in our legislature during, due to the COVID pandemic. And the sessions were very limited in terms of the time that was allocated for them. So any piece of legislation that was not immediately relevant to address the COVID nineteen pandemic and the responses to that was deemed nonessential and nonurgent and had to be reintroduced in the next session if the member who was carrying it was not a turned-out member. So on both fronts, that applied to me and that piece of legislation. I worked really hard to try to find a nexus to its urgency due to the litigation that was out there and some of the promises that have been made to the Environmental Coalition and trying to address those, but to no avail, and things were very, very difficult and very tense at that time in our legislature. As you know, we were shut down a couple of times because some of our staff and a member contracted COVID. So I, you know, we'll go forward. I'm very, very thankful for the robust discussions that I was able to have with all of the stakeholders and members of the Senate, my colleagues, to illustrate the concerns of our district and what all of this actually meant. And extremely thankful to the city of San Clemente and your team of experts, including the legal guidance that I got from Scott Smith. I would call him in late evenings, and he was always very nice to take my call and help me as I was preparing for my floor speeches or my committee speeches. Certainly to the legislative advocates that you have engaged, the Apprea and McCully Group are very, very involved and have wonderful relationships on both sides of the aisle. And as importantly, to the San Clemente residents, your grassroots efforts, your voice was so very valuable in hearings and in meetings. And certainly, we will continue that relationship into the new year when I introduce new legislation that will be relative to SR two forty-one and the toll road. The legislature does return on December seventh. So in the next couple of weeks, I will be having discussions with my staff about our legislative, our two thousand and twenty-one legislative package. We do have until February to introduce legislation. And I remain committed, as you all know, to working with all of the stakeholders that are here tonight. Everyone that was invited to participate, and were not able to attend. As I've said, we need to work together as a team if we are to be successful in sustaining and improving our quality of life here in South Orange County relative to mobility and traffic relief. We all know the frustrations that we do face still in and around South Orange County, but things are getting better. And some of the solutions that have come, because you've all worked so hard, are providing that window of opportunity, and we must take the opportunity to capture it. I ask that each of you here tonight continue to be involved, engage with and support your city officials in their efforts that have been so great to this point in time to protect this great community. And I remind you again, and my office is there to serve you. And when I'm in Sacramento and even when I'm not in Sacramento and here, we or staff are always available to you. So with that, thanks again for all participating and for providing me the opportunity to be here, even though masked and in my district office and not up there on a stage, being able to see you all in person. Thanks again.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for being here. And you're always such a strong advocate for our city. So we, as a city, really appreciate everything that you do for us, Senator Bates. We've completed presenting the big picture updates from our panelists. Now Steve Miska will moderate the audience Q and A so that you can ask questions on your mind. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you to all of our panelists for your overviews to help the community better understand where current transportation plans are. We currently have ten questions open in the queue. So and some of them have some votes which have caused them to raise to the top of the queue. If you haven't found If you haven't found the Q and A function, audience members, you can go to the bottom of your screen, your webinar screen, if you're on Q and A, and that will open up that function and you can type in a question. Please look at the questions in advance to determine if somebody has already asked your question. If they did, simply click the thumbs up icon, and that will help that question rise to the top of the queue. We will try to get to all of your questions this evening. However, the ones with the most votes will be at the top and are most likely to get answered. If we don't answer all of the questions this evening, we'll pass them on to all of the panelists. And the city of San Clemente also plans to post answers to all of the questions on the city webpage. And we will provide in the chat function the link to the toll road information page on the city's website, as well as a way where you can sign up for e-notifications and get instant updates anytime the city updates that information. And with that, let's go to the first question. KCB sends in, "I understand there is a plan to extend Los Petronas to north of the city limit on La Pata. If true, how will San Clemente manage the increased traffic on La Pata, Hermosa, and Pico? What is the timeline for the project?" Do I have any hands up amongst the panelists for who wants to take a crack at that? It looks like Councilmember James, please, go ahead.
I think that's a great question, and it's, the answer is very simple. We need a seat at the table. We need to understand what is going to be built, what is being proposed. We need to understand what the speed is of that traffic coming in. We need to understand what the density is, exactly where will that roadway be? How elevated or low will it be? We need a seat at the table. Without that seat, we would have no ability to control that. Thank you very much.
Other panelists? Okay, we will move on to the next question that comes in from Michelle. "Thank you to the city of San Clemente and Honorable Senator Bates, Attorney Scott Smith, for protecting San Clemente schools, homes, businesses, and our open space from the toll road. How can we ensure the 22 is not taken over by the TCA? The TCA did not even bother to show up tonight, and it is clear that some of the TCA directors want to keep the possibility of a toll road in San Clemente open." Councilmember Ward, please, go ahead.
You, I'll try to take that. I want to reassure our residents that what is being built, we are not calling it number 22. That was a TCA project from their South County Traffic Relief Effort, and they called it number 22. This is a county primary arterial that is called Los Petronas Parkway. It's an extension of the current Los Petronas Parkway that we're all now familiar with that comes from Oso Parkway to Calcam Road. It cannot, once a road is open, it cannot be taken over by the TCA. But it is important to know that the county has fully taken control of this project and that TC and Caltrans have agreed that this is a primary arterial that ends at La Pata, and the county's authority ends at La Pata also. They cannot put a road through our city that we do not agree with. That is part of what Councilmember James talked about, is having a seat at the table. And that's why it's very important. But I assure you that this is a county arterial and that our council would not be agreeing to study this and look at it and help our partners, the Rancho Mission Viejo and the City of San Juan Capistrano, if we were not assured that this is a counter arterial only.
Thank you. Any other panelists want to comment on that?
Maybe, maybe I could just a little bit append to what Councilmember Ward just said. The city's participation in reviewing and/or considering Los Petronas Parkway extension into the city limits would be subject to the constraints that Kathy just mentioned. I'm happy to say that every single constraint she just mentioned, on every point, the county is also in agreement with her and with that. And we would expect to memorialize the agreement of those terms between the city and between the county, if this progresses forward. The other limitation that we don't want to look at is that the county proposes right now, considering Los Petronas Parkway under an addendum to the existing environmental review on the ranch plan. And what that addendum says, or we anticipate will say eventually, is that there's no real significant difference between Los Petronas Parkway connecting to La Pata and not connecting, which, when you think about it, is a very, very small box for anybody to try to blow Los Petronas Parkway open. So any sign off that we afford the county on that environmental document would be subject to those very, very narrow constraints that allow them to readapt the ranch plan and its environmental impact report to Los Petronas Parkway. So that's some insurance right there, that if the county or TCA tried to do that and somehow could blow that right of way out of the constraints that Mr. Bonnigan mentioned, they wouldn't be able to do that using that environmental document.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Bonnigan, did you want to answer that, or are we good?
We're good. Scott handled that well. Thank you.
Got it. Okay, the next question comes again from KCB. And it is, "Is there a plan to connect the east end of Pico to Cristianitos or other road in that area of Rancho Mission Viejo?" Councilmember Ward, please, go ahead.
No, there is no current plan to do that. It has not been discussed.
Okay, we'll move on to Tony Nelson, who asks about, "Has the city of Dana Point shown any interest in joining San Clemente in dispensing with development fees?" Councilmember James, please.
We have not had those discussions with other cities. I think in regards to ceasing impounding development fees, I think that was my motion and seconded by Councilmember Ward. So we both are in total agreement that we need to look at the impounding of development fees because certainly the TCA is in breach of their contract with the city. With that being said, I think it will be important for us to coordinate with Dana Point, with San Juan Capistrano, and maybe even other cities that are not actually receiving any benefit from the presence of the TCA. So we have not, but we will. Thank you for that question, Ms. Nelson.
Awesome. Thank you very much. The next question comes in from Galaxy S10E, whoever has one of those phones. "Building on KCB questions, can the TCA ever take the Petronas Road and connect it to Camino de los Maris through the landfill area? Also, I think conversations have toned down because of COVID-19, so we don't have the traffic going to San Clemente to San Diego. Surely we'll have that again, obviously, when conditions change, hopefully for the better." Councilmember Ward, please.
So I can try. I think, I want you to read the first part again because I got stuck on the second part. What was the first part of the question?
Sure, absolutely. "Building on KCB's previous questions, can the TCA ever take the Petronas Road and connect it to Camino de los Maris through the landfill area?"
That's a very simple question to answer because the county is very protective of the landfill. And that's one of the reasons why the ranch is looking at putting an extension of Los Petronas where they are. It's because the county, we all need that landfill, and they don't want to converge on any part of that boundary. So TCA will not be going through a landfill and trying to connect another road, especially since we just went through all of our traffic studies and TCA Board voted to stop all study because there was no traffic that was necessary for the toll road to do. The arterials and the extension of Los Petronas Parkway provides much cheaper and much better transportation than the toll road extension ever could going through our city to I-5. So that's a very easy question. We're not going to go through the landfill. It's not going to happen.
Thank you for that. The next question comes from Dennis. And he says, "First, thanks to each of you for conceiving and participating in this town hall. It is very much appreciated. Carefully and in detail, will somebody please articulate the business social case for extending Los Petronas Parkway to La Pata, as is being discussed? For example, what is the reduction of time required to travel from the current end of the Parkway to La Pata? Will this extension enhance public safety for San Clementeans? If the answer is yes, please explain. Any other pluses?" Councilmember James.
I think that's a great question, and quite honestly, we just don't have all the data in front of us to properly respond to that question. However, with that in mind, let us go to our traffic consultant and get that, get a response to that, and we'll post it on our website. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Dan McCray. "When will TCA open the connection under the Oso Bridge between the 241 tollway to Los Petronas Parkway?" Councilmember Ward.
I actually thought that that was already open. I know that TCA is working on a little bit of some additional, I don't know if it's electrical work or something under there, but I know that TCA is planning to do a grand opening of that very soon. I think COVID has actually modified that timeline, but I think it's going to be soon. And I will make sure that the city, we post that, and we do a press release on that and help TCA get the word out on that.
Thank you very much. The next question is from 207915. "The TCA has spent over $800,000 on lobbyists to oppose Senator Pat Bates's bill to have the 241 end at Oso Parkway, and this is after they agreed in March to end the toll road at that very point. This makes me think they may have plans that they are not disclosing to us. How can we trust this agency?"
I can take that.
Go ahead.
We can't trust them. Have no doubt that crony capitalism among some directors at the TCA is alive and well. We cannot trust them. We can never trust them. And I, you know, it's a great question. Recently, they appropriated, I think it was $650,000 to create a legal fund to fight the city of San Clemente. So not only is there the $800,000 in lobbyists in Sacramento they're spending, but they have targeted $650,000 against the citizens of San Clemente. So absolutely, we can't trust them. We can never trust them. They are a clear and present danger. Thank you.
Any other panelists?
I'll say something. I sat across from Mike Craman. I'm just a citizen. And he looked me in the eye and he said, "The system's built out, and it's going to be a feeder for the 241." And then when you hear about all the money that they spent to defeat Senator Bates's bill, it really has you thinking, what is next? So you can't trust them, and that's why I think we all need to have an active voice at the table to just echo the theme here, because you can't trust them. They looked me in the eye and said, "Oh, we're done." But yet, they're not willing to make any kind of signed formal commitment. So I would agree with Councilmember James that, well, a clear and present danger, to use his words. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brotherton.
I can add one thing.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brotherton just brought up Mr. Craman. I think it's a great learning point to understand that Mr. Craman announced he was retiring. However, he retired and is now working for the largest consultant to the TCA. That gives you an idea how deep the swamp is at the TCA.
Okay, we still have 18 open questions. And I'm going to ask the audience, please phrase a question because we've got our panelists here and they're providing wonderful information. And as much as we want to praise them and we are all very grateful for their service, I'm going to read these next two because they're not questions, but it's just showing appreciation from the audience. "Senator Bates, thank you for your proposed legislation. Your support is appreciated." And Bob says, "I want to thank Councilmember Ward for continuing to ask the tough questions at TCA Board meetings in the face of opposition from many other board members who have drunk the TCA Kool-Aid." So we'll get those out of the way. We are all in San Clemente. We are all grateful for the panelists we have on the call this evening. Please continue to vote on the questions you want to hear. We are more than likely not going to get through all of the, we will not get through all of the questions tonight because there's 17 open right now. Kate Mudge sends in, "Can you please address the letter sent from the city council and signed by the Mayor Pro Tem Laura Ferguson in enthusiastic support of this extension? Can you explain the M2 funding and why we would seek that funding versus Caltrans or TCA funding?" Councilmember Ward.
Okay, thank you. I would like to address that letter that was sent. Councilmember Ferguson, Mayor Pro Tem, signed it because she is the Mayor Pro Tem of San Clemente. However, the city council agreed on that letter. And what that letter, all it was, it did not authorize the extension being added to the NPA. What it was, was a authorization or a, I'm trying to think of the word.
Support.
Support, thank you. It was support for a study, for an EIR, to study this arterial and find out the impacts. We can't mitigate them or begin to understand what they are unless, until there's a study. So that letter was only for the EIR, support for the grant for that that came through OCTA. It is not anything that is official as far as this road is not in the NPA. And we are all going to go through all those, those steps, and it's going to come through our planning commission, and you're all going to be able to ask questions on it, and we'll get those answered. Definitely, the city council wants all the questions answered on this road. So again, that letter was only signed by the Mayor Pro Tem as because she is the person to do so for our city. So thank you for that question.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Zen Wu. "Thank you, Senator Bates, for your commitment to reintroduce the Senate bill to amend the street and highway code this year. Mr. Smith, can you educate us about the sphere of influence, LAFCO, and the city of San Clemente's ability to review and approve the southerly terminus of the proposed extension of Los Petronas?"
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to try to tackle that. Some of the, is a little bit of a legal thought process that we're keeping to ourselves. But California general plan law allows cities to do master planning within their borders, but also outside their borders in areas that are within their sphere of influence. And I don't exactly know in this part of town where the city's sphere of influence goes, but what that means to us is that the segment, whatever segment of Los Petronas Parkway that might come into San Clemente is definitely subject to the city's general plan and its design guidelines, in particular, its circulation element. What happens outside the city limits is within the jurisdiction of the county. We don't get a vote on what the county does in incorporated areas, but what our general plan says about those areas has great influence on the county as it undertakes environmental review of whatever it has planned in our sphere of influence. What happens with Los Petronas Parkway in terms of the design width of the street, the street segment? What has to happen with gateway elements in terms of landscaping and amenitization will be in San Clemente, subject to the San Clemente general plan and its zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next question also comes from Dan McCray. Do we have a timeline for the start of the design of Los Petronas Parkway Extension Study, et cetera? Councilmember James.
We will have to get back with you on that. We simply don't have that information this evening. We do not know.
Okay, thank you.
I, Councilmember James, if it's okay, the county's critical path for consideration begins at the planning commission this month and culminates in April 2021. That's a best case crash course aggressive schedule for the county to undertake. Their desire is to have that coincide with the, with the city's timeline for considering Los Petronas Parkway within the city. And as Councilmember James indicated, that will be up to the city.
Thank you. Our next question also comes from Kate Mudge. Since the Los Petronas extension will terminate just outside the city limits, how can we guarantee a seat at the table for San Clemente?
Scott, questions?
Well, if you'd like, I can fill that quickly. I think I just answered that a minute ago. To the extent that that comes within the city, to the extent that it's funded with with local sales tax or OCTA participation, the city of San Clemente has to approve it. At least the part of it that comes within the city limits. And, and so that is, that is directly under the city's jurisdiction, subject to the city's general plan.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next question also from Dan McCray. Is San Juan Capistrano partnering with San Clemente on the design of LPB? Councilmember James.
Not yet. But again, that's something we will need to coordinate with, with neighboring cities on.
Okay, great. We'll move also from Dan McCray. Who is in charge of designing LPB, Caltrans, TCA, or ACTA?
It's the county of Orange, right?
It's not even OCTA, it's the county, right?
He's not saying like.
Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. It will be the county of Orange, their public works department, they will be doing that. And so when Scott Smith mentions that it's going through the plan commission, our residents can follow that, our cities will certainly be following it and we will be having input on that. So that's, that's, that's who's doing it. It's the county. This is a full county constrained project. Involves no other agency.
I could add, as Senator Bates mentioned earlier, that'll be the very same process that occurred with the La Pata extension to San Clemente.
Thank you very much. The next question comes from Cord. How can the TCA and Supervisor Lisa Bartlett think that managed lanes on Highway 5 is a viable option when this concept clearly breaks rules for road ownership control and for the building of toll roads parallel to highways? Councilmember Ward.
So we don't have all that answer, Cord. It's a, that's a good question. Definitely, we did not think that the toll agency could had any jurisdiction to put toll lanes on I-5 when their mission clearly says that they will be parallel to, to highways. So you know, we will be asking that and looking at that. Certainly you always hear about managed lanes and Caltrans does have that, that that function to look at that. But the city of San Clemente, we always look at, at what's needed and our, our traffic. Our traffic study did not show that that managed lanes was necessary. And if you look at what OCTA did recently on our freeways, our roads are pretty wide open. So we will always manage and monitor that and make sure that nothing is added unless it's absolutely necessary to do.
Thank you for that. I will remind our audience, we're coming up on time for questions. And so if you've got some, you really like in a queue, please go to the vote buttons and help them rise to the top. Our next question comes from Karen Terry. I love it because it totally is in line with the nonprofit work that we do at First Amendment Voice. What can we as citizens do to assist all of you in keeping up the good fight in regards to this issue? Councilmember James.
Citizen engagement is going to be key here. And it's going to be letter writing campaigns, or in this case, in the 21st century emails, email writing campaigns to the board of supervisors repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly to OCTA, repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly to, to Caltrans, to, 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 to the TCA. You may think it's falling on deaf ears, but they're seeing it. They're, they're reading it, you know? When, when Pat Bates's new bill comes up to protect our conservation easement, you know, emails to, to the to, to, to the state senate, to the transportation committee, to the president of the state senate, when, when that bill goes to the assembly, to the speaker, to the transportation committee at the, in the assembly, again, just repeatedly, and I, you know, hundreds and thousands of notes to, to these different agencies. Get, get on it and, and, and help us out because it's going to be citizen engagement that's going to make the difference here. When, when Wayne Eggleston talked about the one guy at Tressles and, and what he did by him, you know, he started a movement all by himself. So imagine the power of hundreds of you writing thousands of emails. Thank you very much. I think that's a great question, great point.
Senator Bates, it looks like you're off mute to answer that as well.
Yes, I would like to because I think it's a very, very important question. And it's a very important approach that one should take when you are trying to influence the decision makers. And probably the first thing they do when you step out, start with something positive. We get criticized a lot, those of us who have development issues that we're just NIMBYs, right? We don't want anything. But if you start out with at least complimenting something that's gone on with the, if nothing else, just the opportunity to provide your input. And I know many of you have been very offended with the manner in which you've been treated. I will tell you my 20 years of being in this business. I can tell you how much I've been offended, but I let it be yesterday's news and try to start out each day that I'm engaged in these with something positive. And something very positive happened when TCA paid attention to the, let's say the science, that's big to talk about these days and the facts. And you presented those facts to them because you engaged and you spent your money, your taxpayer dollars to do transportation studies and say, wait a minute, you guys, you know, the black box that you're using is really out of date. The new black box that we used shows that this is not a transportation solution. And it has tremendous environmental impacts. It has tremendous emotional impacts. And we'd like you just to pay attention to that. And can't we sit down and talk about it? Well, they didn't engage you in that, but they talked about it among themselves and said, hey, you know, we're not getting transportation solution from alternate number 14. It's going to cost us a fortune, which, which we probably won't be able to afford because we can't get the writers on there and the toll tolls to pay the bonds that we have to issue for this. So they did the right thing. And I think it's important to recognize that. I think it's important to recognize that not every member of that board is basically so negative towards you. I have met with several of them who were very negative towards me initially. Because I came out early, if you remember, and I wrote a letter totally criticizing their, their plans with the spy, I called it a spider web all over San Clemente and a few of the other communities that there had to be arterial solutions. Well, what we've come to is an arterial solution, frankly, on relieving traffic. And you did that. Your study showed that, and you presented it, and they did accept it. So some appreciation for that. And then engage with individual board members when you can. I believe Kathy's done an excellent job. And she's taken a lot of slings and arrows sitting on that board. I'd left the board. We didn't do that to our colleagues in my day. Maybe a few, but, but not many. So, you know, hurrah to her and to all of you. But start with a solution and start with some appreciation and let them first be disrespectful. Then you can oppose that in a respectful manner. And that has certainly gotten me a long way, you guys. I've been doing this since 1988, okay? And I've lost one election in all that time. And that was because of the things that go on in elections. But I haven't held grudges against those people who did it to me. I just came back and said, it's a new day. Let's start again. And you are on, I do believe you are at the gate of success. You're going to get there. All of the people participating tonight, the 64 folks that are on the, as participants, all of us who are there, we're all working together and we are a strong, positive team. Think of yourself as that to find a solution to provide mobility solutions and protect quality of life. And it's not just yours in San Clemente. I mentioned that to all of them. This is about all those communities that lay adjacent to the fly. And I have been involved in issues, helping them along the many years. That's my job. That's what you sent me to do and it's been my honor. So try to stay on the glass half full. And when you are really mad about anything and they've been disrespectful, call me up and yell at me and I'll help you through it. Because I've also, I think as a social worker, I'm a great listener, you guys. I spent about 13 years doing that too. So I'm so impressed. You've done a fabulous job. Just keep it up, keep it more on the positive. And I think we'll, we'll get where we all want to get.
What a wonderful segue from our Q and A session. And we wanted to leave some time for our council members to provide some closing comments. And I will remind our audience, we will get to all the unanswered questions as well. Those will be put up. But Councilmember James, please provide your concluding comments.
The one thing I think every person in San Clemente needs to understand is our very first concern, our overriding concern is quality of life for San Clemente. You know, if, if this route proves not to provide that quality of life or to have an impact on our quality of life, we will fight this route, route as, as much as we fought, as much as we have fought the, the TCA. The TCA, I'll say it again, presents a clear and present danger to our cit, to, to our city. If, if the TCA did not have intentions of putting a scar of concrete and steel through our city, why would they have opposed Pat Bates's SB 1373? All it was, was a conservation easement. Recently, on a vote of 11 to one, you have to understand that the TCA board is broken down into two boards. One, the San Joaquin Board, which is the 73, and one foothill eastern, which is the 241. Recently, the, the, the board for San Joaquin voted 11 to one with my partner here being the one lone vote against it to appropriate $650,000 to fight in legal fees to fight San Clemente. Again, an indicator that there's nefarious intentions. I encourage everyone to review this, this scathing grand jury report, Orange County Grand Jury Report. And I'm going to look at the interim city manager here. Can we put that up on our website? We're going to put that up on our website. And for you people out there and those that are going to view it later, I encourage you to, to look at that Orange County Grand Jury Report. It was scathing. And when the TCA board members met about it, all, all they did were two things. They attacked the grand jury and they attacked the good citizens of San Clemente. I think at one point in time, we were called liars in chief. Again, I'm going to go back to a question earlier. This is already in my note, engagement, engagement, engagement. We need hundreds of people writing thousands of letters. And we already have some great citizens out there doing it, but we need more. I am going to finish my comments with, thank God for Senator Pat Bates. She, she has been there for us. She will continue to be there for us. And I hope she doesn't think that, I hope she accepts this or how it is. She is indeed our city's guardian angel. And Pat, thank you for everything you've done for our city and continue to do. And I, I would, I would, I'm getting a note here. Oh, absolutely. And Colonel Misca and Mr. Nguyen, thank you very much for your, for your involvement today. I already thanked them once. And, but I'll thank them again. You guys are great and you, you made this, I think, a very successful event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman James. Councilwoman Ward, floor is yours.
Thank you. I would like to first thank every single resident of San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano, Dana Point, even some residents up in Rancho Santa Margarita for the assistance that they gave San Clemente and the input that they had with the TCA. I would agree with Senator Bates that we were successful. TCA in March voted to stop all planning of the toll road. There's a reason why they did that. It's because they couldn't go any further any longer. We always believed they didn't have a viable solution. And through our consultants, we did a traffic study and it showed that an arterial solution was much better. I want to show you a map of Rancho Mission Viejo because I think a lot of our residents don't realize what is above us. You will see San Clemente, the border in the bottom right or left hand corner. Look at Planning Area 5. The two reds that you see in Essencia and Sandero, those are already built. Planning Area 3, 4, and then 5 adjacent to our boundaries. That is what is going to be next. And that is why Rancho Mission Viejo has asked for an arterial highway to connect to the county road La Pata to help their development. So this is a normal county planning process. It's unfortunate that it has been mixed up with TCA and that they put it in as number 22 to their solutions. But basically that board was, was saying that they support a county arterial extension. And that was not such a bad thing. It is making this process a little more confusing. But I hope that tonight we have given you enough information and reassured you that the process of the county is, is going on now is a constrained county process and it is a primary arterial and is not the toll road. And it's not the extension or the first part of a toll road that's going to come through our city. And I hope that we have assured you that that is, that is the case.
Thank you, Councilmember. And a huge thanks to all of our panelists, Senator Pat Bates, council members Jean James and Kathy Ward, former mayor Wayne Eggleston, our attorney Scott Smith, Mr. Tom Bonniget and Mr. Andy Brotherton. Thank you all for participating. Thank you to the city for hosting this event. And of course, my counterpart Jim Nguyen. Always a pleasure to work alongside of you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening and for submitting and voting on questions. The city of San Clemente will post answers to all the unanswered questions on the toll road extension link on the city's website. You can also sign up for their e-notifications. We sent that to you in the chat function this evening. So please grab that link there or go to their website and sign up. By asking your questions and hearing the panelists respond, we hope you're better informed about current plans for quality of life in San Clemente and surrounding areas. We applaud you, the audience, for showing an interest in your town. Check the chat function to get the e-link notification. Make sure if you're, you know, friends who were not able to be here tonight, the city will publish this webinar on their YouTube channel as well as their public access channel tomorrow. Thank you for getting involved and taking an interest in our Spanish Village by the Sea. Good night.